Thank you.
Great.
Okay, so this looks, looks fine. I'm going to read, do you mind if I read back what we understood you to say? I'll just do it briefly. You, you read the, the header of the proposed motion listing the chapters that are proposed to be amended. And then you modified it within accordance with SB 946 and accepting portions which are not directly applicable to SB 946, comma, and furthermore find that, and you've included the two paragraphs as set forth. And then you've modified the second one to say, adopt the proposed amendments to the municipal code, but the findings reflected in the proposed ordinance, which the planning commission makes as though set forth in their entirety in this resolution as applicable to SB 946, comma, in substantially the form as shown in set exhibit entitled blah, blah, blah. And my only recommendation here, or our only recommendation would be to add only as applicable to SB 946, just to clarify that we're only, you're only recommending those, those provisions.
Okay, so adding the word only to item two, so it's only as applicable to SB 946.
Yes, and I think to be, to dot our i's here, I guess you should kind of make a friendly amendment to your motion.
Okay, so my, okay, so my friendly amendment is to add the word only to item two. So it's only as applicable to SB 946. So we had a, a motion and a second, so we are still at that point? Is that correct?
Yeah, you, I think, believe you needed a vote for your friendly amendment. Not a vote, a second, sorry.
Oh, do I have a second for my friendly amendment? Adding the word only.
A second?
All right, thank you, Commissioner Saxena. All right, do we want to deliberate on this anymore or take a vote? Commissioner Fang?
I had one question. So one, one of the areas that I think there was some concern about in the previous discussion, and this is part of why I would actually recommend that we reject the entire thing, was the discussion around the 15 minute limit on locating being in a site. Now, I'm curious whether we believe that's part, you know, that was something that was associated with mobile services, not with, you know, not with sidewalk services. So do we believe that to be part of this motion or not part of this motion?
That, that would be, and it's my understanding that that would not be part of this motion because that's not applicable to the SB 946. Could attorneys please weigh in on that?
I mean, I think it could or it couldn't be, it is not necessarily applicable. The way that the, the way that it's drafted right now, that does apply to roaming sidewalk vendors. That is a restriction that could be imposed on those vendors if you wanted it to. So I guess I'm not, I guess it doesn't necessarily belong or not. Does that make sense? It, it, we don't, state law, SB 946 doesn't require that. So that's, that's a restriction, I think, that staff imposed, that SB 946 allows the city to impose, but it is not required to.
Yeah, so, so I think that, thank you very much for that, for that insight. I think that that actually is kind of in that territory, this is actually in the territory of, you know, we want to do SB 946 compliance as a objective, even if it's not something that's time critical. However, you know, there were a number of things that were introduced that were associated closely with, but probably not part of. So I, again, I would just, I would just say that personally I oppose, I oppose doing this. I would rather see that, you know, we vote this one down and, and have it come back with a very explicit, you know, this is SB, SB 946 compliance, you know, kind of right to the, you know, these are the areas which are directly conflicted by SB 946. Do we correct those and then treat the other ones, you know, separately from that? But thanks.
Could we clarify with regards to the 15 minutes? That is for mobile trucks that would have a 15 minute time limit to conduct a transaction in residential areas. And that is not applicable to SB 946, which is regarding sidewalk vendors, mobile and stationary.
Chair Moore, I can take that. So the 15 minute maximum, that, the restriction for them to not exceed 15 minutes to do a transaction is applicable to sidewalk vendors, which is under SB 946. That is one that was included just for roaming vendors. So as a category of roaming, they should be moving. And when they have to stop for a transaction, a 15 minute cap is listed.
So is that gone with the motion that I have? Is that 15 minutes, would that not, not be included or would it? I think that's.
It would still be included, yes.
Okay, so we're, so the SB, the SB 946, the sidewalk vendor portion is all intact as you have it. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, so the, so we, we still have all the sidewalk then vendor portion as you presented it, but we are not making any decisions regarding the food trucks, the service trucks and the, the goods trucks. Is that correct? Just want to make sure we've got this perfectly clear.
Correct.
Okay, all right, so that, I intended it.
It wasn't the point, though, that Commissioner Fang was, was making was the 15 minute and then that it does apply, it as written is applying to roaming sidewalk vendors.
Yes, it does, and that, that's how they, that's how they planned it from the, from staff, yes.
So I would just say that that is in excess of compliance with 946. That's an example of, that's an example of something that was chosen, chosen to illustrate that restrictions could be placed beyond the state law.
Well, I happen to like the 15 minute restriction on the, on the sidewalks like that. And, and also as we went through SB 946, there's only a limited amount of areas in the city where they would actually be able to set up because of the four foot, the four foot passageway that, that they have added. So I, I think that, I like, I like it as it is.
That's actually another example. The state law, we, as, as we discussed in the hearing, the state law is three and a half feet or three feet, not four feet. Again, that's something where the city has chosen to make a, chosen to raise, you know, to impose a standard that goes beyond the state law.
And I think it's a wise standard that they've added, especially when you have kids that are going to be on bicycles on the sidewalk. I think having the four feet was a smart choice and I agree with it.
And I think. Right, at that point, it's an arbitrary number, three and a half feet, four feet, five feet. Why not make it 10 feet? So I don't, you know, introducing an arbitrary number is, I think, not a wise thing to do.
Do we want to continue on this or shall we call the vote? Any further comments? Commissioner Wong?
Let's call it, let's call it.
Vice Chair, all right, Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Is this just for the friendly amendment? So, sorry, is this just for the friendly amendment or is this the whole thing?
The whole thing with the friendly amendment, yes. Okay, um, excuse me, Vice, Vice Chair Wong?
Um, no, nay, nay, so.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Okay, now, now I'm kind of confused. Just to be clear, an I vote is saying we're passing along the parts to be compliant with regard to modifying our city ordinances. And a nay vote is denying the whole thing, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, nay.
Actually, I'm sorry to interject in this moment, but you have to make a recommendation. So you can only make a recommendation if, if you're making an affirmative vote. A, a nay vote is going to mean you're going, someone's going to have to make another motion. Because, because a nay vote just, just, just scrubs this recommendation.
The nay vote says no recommendation. The yea vote says this recommendation is, is going forward and councilmen go decide what they want to do with it.
Yeah, so if the nays prevail, you're going to have to make another recommendation. Because there needs to be a recommendation. Does that make sense?
Right, but that would be after we vote, we complete.
Exactly, I just want to make that clear, yeah, yeah, okay.
Could we just specify again what we're voting for? It's the, the, or in the proposition with the friendly amendment, right? The one I seconded like a few minutes ago?
Yes.
Okay, cool, thank you.
It's, it's only the portion which would affect the sidewalks. So these are vendors on the sidewalks.
Okay, hold on, so this is just, just so before I recuse my vote, if I have to recuse my vote.
Yes, yes.
I just want to double check here. So, so the existing provisions that were passed by state law, plus an additional provision that's related to sidewalks is where we're at.
It's only sidewalks, SB 946, as far as I understand is.
It's only for sidewalk vendors, it's only for sidewalk vendors.
Right, so personally, for, for clarity, when this was brought to the planning commission, in my opinion, we should have just had SB 946 as an agenda item and then an entirely separate issue should have been, in my opinion, the trucks, completely separated because this is all, we're having trouble with this. So I would have, I would have wanted it broken apart. Let's deal with the sidewalks, SB, SB 946 as a complete, separate agenda item. And then, and then not seeing the trucks mixed in.
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, I would like to change my vote to an I for now. Thank you.
Okay, so recorded. Commissioner Takahashi, did you? Are you good with your, your no vote?
Correct.
Okay, Commissioner Fang?
So before I, before I vote, I just want to remind everybody that what we're, the way that this is moving forward now, it is with stack, staff recommendations on, on sidewalk vendors that is independent of the things that are required for compliance with SB 9, 946. And with that, I will also vote no.
Okay, Commissioner Saxena?
Yes?
And Chair Moore?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries 302 with Takahashi and Fang voting no.
That would be 32, right?
320, yes, thank you, sorry.
Okay, so that concludes item three and we are moving on to item four. Subject: Municipal Code Amendments to Adopt Glazing and Lighting Regulations to Implement the Fiscal Year 2019-2020 City Council Work Program Items Related to Dark Sky and Bird Safe Design. Application Number MCA 2019-003 and MCA-2019-004. Applicant: The City of Cupertino. Location: Citywide. Continued from the August 11th, 2020 meeting. Recommended action: Conduct a public hearing and recommend that the city council find that the action is exempt from CEQA and amend the municipal code by adding a new chapter 19.102 and amending chapters 19.08, 19.12, 19.40, 19.60, and 19.72 to adopt glazing and lighting regulations to implement bird safe design and dark sky goals. Tentative City Council Hearing Date: December 1st, 2020. And we begin with a staff report.
Good evening, so I'll start off with the presentation, Chair Moore. Okay, so I just want to briefly catch everyone up. We did a study session and outreach back in 2019 and outreach in 2020. We recently brought it to Planning Commission for everyone to hear on August 11th. And so this is our second hearing at Planning Commission was continued. We took in comments from our last public hearing and we have specifically addressed those concerns from the commission. I'm going to go over the bird safe and then Eric will join in with the dark sky regulations. So some of the concerns that was brought up and the changes that we made were in reference to bird safe glazing, bird safe treatment area and possible exemptions. We also addressed bird safe interior lighting requirements and did some clarification within the design requirement section of the draft ordinance. So for the bird safe proposed applicability, nothing's really changed here. If you look at the red line document, but I just wanted to highlight what areas would be applicable. So new primary accessory buildings, remodel of primary or accessory, accessory buildings only to the remodeled portions. And then newer replacement glass of windows, doors and features. So essentially, if you're building any new buildings or if you're doing a remodel of any portions, we'd want you to be compliant with bird safe design, okay? And then the, one of the concerns that commissioners brought were the cost. And so what we did was we talked to a couple of manufacturing of bird safe treatments. So I'm highlighting two specific types. And then the rest of my presentation, I will go over some of the other options. There are many, many options. But the two that are pretty common for bird safe glazing treatments is fritting and UV. So generally, the average cost of an untreated glazing, so like a curtain wall, imagine an office building with floor to, to ceiling windows and doors. Typically, that costs about 100 to 200 square feet for a curtain wall and that's untreated glazing. And so if you're going to do added fritting or added UV, that's, costs about five, $5 per square feet for fritting and for UV, 12 to 15 square feet. Again, these are just two companies that we reached out to. And there's a lot of different costs associated with just window installation. Because you have to pick your glazing, you have to pick your framing and, and then, you know, your shipping and all of that. But overall, for fritting, it's just a added, you know, 5% cost and for UV, about 10% of window cost. And so I'm trying to present this in, these are all estimated numbers. So if at the bottom chart, you'll see we highlight the typical type of homes, because I know that was a major concern of commissioners, was the cost to a typical homeowner. So we did a valuation on a single story home, a two story home and a two story hillside home. And we based it off of the approximate square footage of the home, the total number of windows that home had. So we used a kind of projects that came into the city and we use this kind of an estimate of what that would be. And then we found out the applicable window square footage for each of those three types. So the bottom portion is kind of the, the main data points. And then if you look at the, the table on top, this is the math that we used based off of the estimates that were given to us from the two companies. So an average cost of untreated glazing, that's the second column on the top chart. If we're going for, you know, between 100 to 200 square feet for unglazed curtain wall, we used an estimate of the average of 150 square feet based off of the applicable windows. That's the approximate cost. Again, this is not concrete numbers, okay? These are just comparison to if you were to do the treatment to windows that would be untreated. So added cost for fritting, you can see for a single story home, about 3,000 square, about $3,000. And then for UV rating, maybe about $6,000. In the revised ordinance, we removed the minimum window sizes requirement. And typical to what other cities have done, they've simply just applied a allowance that said that you can have, you'd have to treat 90% of the glazing on a frontage and then 10% could be untreated. So you can elect to choose your, 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 your areas. If you look at the image to the left of the slide, you know, the blue will represent windows and the white would represent solid facades or ones that are not glazing. And so for glass between the ground and 60 feet above, if you look at the, at the side, that's kind of facing us with more white, that one, you can see already 10% of that facade is, 90% of that facade is already treated as in it's not glazing, right? So the glazing requirement would be based off of the facade. Just to clarify, we didn't make any changes to the 10% and the 5%. That's our, that was already in our original draft, we just removed the minimum window size. To address some concerns about affordable housing and just the impact to single family homes, we clarified that there would be exemptions. The two that we've listed are residential developments in R1 zones that are not in bird sensitive areas would be exempted and also 100% affordable housing projects. So bird sensitive areas is defined as areas that are residential hillside within 300 feet of parks and open space within our wildland, 300 feet or within our wildland urban interface. So those areas we've kind of targeted as attractants to birds. If you are a single family development in an R1 zone that's outside of those areas, bird sensitive areas, you would be exempted from these requirements. So I just wanted to bring back some of the images of how someone can treat their, their glazing. Again, this is mainly, we get a lot of bird strikes typically from ground floor up. So it's not the skyscrapers. And so in the city of Cupertino, we do have smaller, we have lower heights, but that was bird, bird collision does happen on the lower floors as well. Some of these treatments, you can see, they can do dots, you can do different designs and they can integrate well with the building and the offices. So these are just a couple of images of other bird safe treatments. The intent of the bird safe glazing requirement is to first minimize glazing. If a property decides to build with glass as their main material, this is when this would kick in because then now you have to be cautious that the windows that, the transparency of the glazing will track birds and they won't see that it's a solid frontage. And so you can do that with some of the, you know, fritting or UV that I showed in previous pictures or something like on this last one, the bottom right, you can have exterior, you know, projections like, you know, this, this very artistic articulated facade in front of your glazing as well. And so from the human's perspective, you can still see out and the birds can visually see that they can't fly straight through the glazing. And then for interior lighting, there was concern from commissioners saying that was, it was going to be difficult to enforce if someone kept their lights on during, off during a certain time. And so we have only, we have made it only applicable to non-residential. So this will apply to, you know, our office buildings. So if they're not using the space, so they would have to turn off their lights. The requirement specifically in the ordinance states that they would have to install time switch or automatic occupancy sensors. This is already pretty typical of, you know, non-residential properties. And then the lights off requirement would be 11 PM or two hours after the close of business. And we've removed blinds as an option that's kind of more behavioral and it's a little more difficult to manage. And so to address the planning commissioners' concerns about lighting in residential, we've just removed it completely for residential properties. And then lastly, we did a clarification on design. This wasn't really a concern from commissioners, but we want to just clarify that features that are visible from end to end, like this glass hallway example, should also be avoided. So the way the draft ordinance was written was we should avoid tight corners where, or reflective glass. And we just wanted to clarify that even though, even if you have this hallway like this, a bird can see through to both sides and kind of fly right through and, and collide into the glass. So we just added a clarification that visible, the features that are visible from end to end should also be avoided. So that covers the bird safe requirements and the modifications that we made to the last draft ordinance based off of your comments and some clarifications. We do have the lighting portion as well. We can continue with the presentation, so you get all of staff's input or we can stop for questions.
Do the commissioners have a preference? Do you have some burning questions that you want to get answered right now? I am, I'm going to switch to gallery view, how are we doing? Any questions?
Well, let me ask one. It's actually a lighting question, which was in your, the first half of your presentation there, about timers and, and lighting. I just wanted to clarify, so for instance, for a building like Apple Park, are they compliant with that law now?
Yes, I'm still unmuted. Um, I don't, I don't know the answer to that specifically. They probably had a, they did go through a bird review as part of their EIR, but specifically for interior lighting, I can't say that I know specifically if they are in compliance, but I don't think we've had any code complaints about bright lights.
I can try to answer that if I may, if you go as planning manager. If they are compliant, that's because they have voluntarily complied with it, but there were no necessary requirements or regulations from the city's end with regard to that.
Right, so I, I'm just actually asking that question, posing it more as a, if somebody were to build a building like that after this law, whether that, that, when you drive by Apple Park at night, it does, it is lit, although not as lit as when, you know, it would be if you were driving by, you know, early in the evening or, or during the day. So they, I don't, I don't, I have no doubt that they're doing things like occupancy sensors and trying to reduce the amount of light, but at the same time, there is a lot of glass and, and there is some amount of lighting. And I realize that this doesn't apply retroactively, so I, I'm just curious about the implications of that, of that particular wording for the future.
If I may, so one of the things that the energy code does require, starting to require is that lighting be on motion sensors. So at a certain point in time, lighting is meant to be turned off, essentially when it's not in use. So that's something I can't recall far retroactively, that goes back, but in discussions with some of our, our building engineers, they mentioned that's something that's occurring more and more as a requirement to meet the title of 24 energy requirements.
Thanks.
I have a quick question for Ellen. So the, the window treatments are now in, for what, what elevations, what height?
Yeah, so it's on all facades and all elevations. The difference is 0 to 60 and then 60 and above. Okay, so from zero, from ground to 60 feet above ground, you have to treat 90% of the glazing in that facade.
Okay.
And for 60 feet above, that is 95% of glazing needs to be treated.
Okay, and I thought I had read that there was a, an exception for 0 to 15 feet in commercial areas.
Correct, yeah, so that exemption still stands from the previous draft ordinance, which I didn't specify because it wasn't modified. But yes, an exemption, we do have up to a height of 15 feet for first floor commercial storefronts.
Okay, so if I were, if I were to build a, a, a tower that's 200 feet tall, the first, and I have some commercial on the ground floor, 15, it's 15 feet, there would be no, no requirement there. And then I've got a 90% requirement, then really from 15 to 60 feet, and then a 95% requirement over 60 feet and up to the 200.
You got it.
Got it, okay, good. Any other commissioners? Okay, so we'll move on to the dark skies ordinance, right?
Sounds good.
Okay, let's make this, all right, everyone see my screen, okay? All right, so, so as Ellen mentioned, this is like continuation from the planning commission meeting. So there are some questions and some stuff that Steph needed to go back and look into. So the things that we looked at was cost analysis of light fixtures. So we looked at different light fixtures. and how they would be implemented. And the cost is minimal, especially for residential projects. Lighting could even exist in line, can be retrofitted with either photocells or motion sensors. You can just buy a, like a small attachment that can be wired into an existing light fixtures, range between $10 and $30. New lighting with photocells, so you know, dark, you know, when it gets dark, those lights range between 10 and 200. You can even buy photos, lighting with photocells and motion sensors. And those range between $35 and $150, really depends on how much you want to spend, but the, the price range is pretty significant in that. And so we also looked at the residential, non-residential. So our regulations as proposed would apply citywide. And this is generally consistent with other cities who have dark sky ordinances. The, the cost prohibitive elements like a, like a photometric plant, or you need an electrical engineer or light engineer. We did include a provision that the CDD director, the community development director can wait for certain requirements when, when, certain requirements, when the compliance can be determined. So we didn't make any changes there. We just made a clarification on, on the beginning of the, of the dark sky ordinance. In terms of code enforcement, so processes already exist and the specific code to deal with reverse code enforcement, code enforcement and violations. So we work a lot, you know, staff, it does work as a reactive code enforcement. And our goal is always to achieve compliance. So the benefit of using the new proposed regulations is that we would have very clear objective standards to help ensure compliance. And so we didn't make any changes for anything code enforcement related. So in, in implementation in other cities, I was able to speak to the city of San Francisco and Portalo Valley. They have pretty stringent dark sky ordinance. And in discussions with them, the ordinance implementation was not difficult. You know, it seemed from their experience that the applicants or residents were able to understand the ordinance relatively quickly. Enforcement was, was smooth when they could point to objective standards, so motion sensors, photocells, orientation, fixture type, that kind of stuff made it really easy for them to be like, oh, yes, this is a violation. And they were, would be able to handle that. So we, we did discuss with some chamber members regarding the regulations. And generally they're, they're pretty supportive. When you, with our larger developments, the parking regulations really kick in and our parking regulations have a lot of lighting regulations. And those lighting regulations are actually already, are transferred into this proposed ordinance. So many of the regulations like dark, no direct off-site glare, the parking light levels, and then allowing for higher levels of illumination in certain areas, that's, that's already built in. So many of our newer developments are already incorporating that into their projects. One concern that they did have was, well, not concerned with that was, you know, coordinated lighting and late night activities. So we did update the ordinance to propose that outdoor lighting can be allowed to go past 11:00 PM in conjunction with a use permit. So we took the use permit because that's the implement, the tool that people need to be able to go, to go past 11:00. So if you go past 11:00 in commercial business, you do need a use permit for that. One item the, the commission did bring up was lighting at sports fields and in parks. So the city does not have any regulatory authority over lighting at public schools. So the proposed ordinance does exempt lighting within the public right of way and parks. So new lighting at public sports courts, fields and parks would, would be, would be reviewed in conjunction with the capital permit program. So it would go through the normal process through council for that. High intensity discharge lighting would be prohibited at any private sports court. And then any private lighting for a sports court would be viewed with consistency with, with the regulation. So public comments, I think here, so those are concerned with the new regulatory requirements during the, you know, the current economic situation. Should be noted that many of these regulatory requirements are already applicable in a lot of commercial mixed use areas and multifamily areas and to an extent hillside zones. The ordinance really serves as a consolidation and expansion of the, the lighter requirements to all zones. One big thing to note too is that we're, we're not retroactively applying these. These are allowing for existing non-conforming lighting fixtures to continue. Essentially, your lighting can remain until, you know, a certain threshold is hit, you know, new development or replacing a fixture. So we didn't, we didn't want to mess with that. We want to allow people to transition a little bit smoother. So this is a table kind of showing how the outdoor lighting requirements exist in our proposal. You'll see, you know, commercial mixed use, multifamily and larger housing elements already have some of these lighting requirements applied to them. The, the big difference now is single family, if you're placing triplex, will also have these proposed with them. This slide is a, just some, some of the changes since the first draft. So reduced applicability of the bird safe treatment, eliminated the interior light standards for residential developments, exempted 100% of affordable housing developments and single family development outside bird sensitive areas. Allowed alternative standards for public gardens. Actually, if you are, for instance, doing lighting or kind of thing like think the Bay Bridge, artwork would be reviewed in conjunction with an art permit, which will go through the fine arts commission. And then we also clarified the language regarding lighting associated with permanent late night activity. So these are all the applicable SEQA exemptions for the ordinance. So 1508 being adopted to ensure maintenance, restoration, enhancement, or protection of the environment. Section 15301, regulations would not result in the expansion of use. 1535, minor alteration, long use alteration that does not alter permitted uses or density. 150613 is it can be seen with certainty that the proposed regulation will have no possible significant effect on the environment. And section, section 15300.2, that the non, the project, the SEQA exemption applies to the proposed ordinance. So also for public noticing, did our, you know, notice for hearings, illegal ad in the newspaper, at least 10 days prior to hearing, display ad in the newspaper, posted on the city's official news or this bulletin board and posted on the city's website for this part of the hearing. So our recommended action is to conduct a public hearing and adopt the draft resolution recommend. Also find the actions and sentiments SEQA and amend the spoke code by adding a new chapter, 1902. Many chapters, 1908, 19.12, 19.40, 19.60, and 19.7, 19.72 to using a lighter regulations to bird safe design and dark sky goals. And that concludes my portion and staff is available for any questions.
Do any of the commissioners have some questions on this portion? The dark skies portion? Okay. Well, I have one, one question. If I, if I had, which I don't, if I had a, I was installing an outdoor tennis court on my, on my estate, but I don't have. If I'm doing that and I want to play tennis at 10 o'clock at night, it's hot, it's cooled off. I want to play tennis, it's late. Would I be able to put lights out there? It sounds like I can't.
You can't put high intensity discharge lighting. So, you know, you know, it'd be kind of more of a glow than anything. You'd have to be all our other requirements, you know, shielded. For that one, we will likely want a photometric plan to ensure that the, the, the light is being dispersed evenly and not too bright. And we wouldn't want it to be glaring to any of your, your neighbors, you know, even if you're on the state, someone could probably see your light. And so we want to make sure that that's not being intrusive and the lighting is, you know, being directed towards the appropriate use. And then really the intent is to, you know, help with the dark sky.
Okay. So was that, I'm not sure that was a no.
So it's, it's, it depends on how bright you want it.
So I, I, I will say a, a chair more depends on the activity, right? Talking about tennis depends on your site and depends on what level of lighting you desire for your tennis court. If you're looking at sort of the recreational, you know, technical tennis courts, then you obviously need a higher intensive, intensity type of lights. And then that would not, wouldn't be permitted. But if it's just for family use and recreational for a family and you want to use a lower intensity type of lighting that, that fits a requirement, then you can certainly do that. So it's a yes and no response.
Okay. So that, and that's the only, that's the only private use I could think of that would require that much, that much lighting outdoors.
Oh, I would.
That, that and basketball.
Yeah.
I mean, outdoor court, but you might want to have outside floodlights as well. Right? You have a barbecue or party outside your house, but let's say we're in safer environments. You might be running 50 watt LED lights in the back so people can see. So those would be banned.
We, yeah, we do prohibit that. But the big thing to remember is that the, the, really the intent is so that lighting is not being directed to adjacent properties away from the use, right? So if you have an outside patio or barbecue, there's really no intent to be, you know, putting the light away from you, right? The light should be to kind of, well, that's the intent at least.
Is this, are we grandfathered in for existing client, existing single family in this, in this proposal?
Correct. So we're not asking for any retroactive lights to be, you know, updated, upgraded. What we do ask is if the lighting of a fixture is being replaced or a new fixture is proposed, that that fixture would be consistent with dark sky lighting requirements.
A related question to tennis courts. So the city owned tennis courts. If some maintenance needs to be done, will the cost of the city go up now to be compliant with the new thing?
No, we, we did, we purposely exempted lighting within the public right of way and at public parks so that, that lighting would not be impacted by this.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. And there's, so if you're replacing your lights, you do need to comply.
So that, it should be more specific, light, lighting fixtures. So if your light bulb goes out, we're not going to say, go get a whole new thing. It's your lighting fixture. So if you're going from, you know, want a different design, essentially, that's when it would get triggered. Like, oh, my light bulb went out. I gotta go buy a new light fixture. That's not our intent. Our intent is for that fixture to, whenever you choose to replace that fixture, that fixture.
Okay. Okay. Are there any further questions from the commissioners before I open this up for public comment? Okay. Not hearing any. I'm going to go for opening up public comments and our first individual is Connie Cunningham. Connie?
Oh, good evening, Chair Moore. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Welcome, Connie. You have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Moore and planning commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I did send two photos that I would like shared on the screen at this time. Is that possible? Okay, that, that first little bird is a ruby crowned kinglet. And the next one down, Beth, when you show that one, is a hooded oriole. I am Connie Cunningham. I've lived here for 33 years and I'm a Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society member. I commend staff for an excellent report responding to the planning commission's questions from August the 11th. These recommendations will be effective in reducing harmful effects of glass and lighting. I am writing to support the city's implementation of dark sky and bird safe design municipal ordinances. These changes will not only protect the birds in our city that bring joy and life to residents, but will also protect all humans since light pollution is detrimental to us as well as wildlife. I have over 35 photos of wild birds who live in my neighborhood that live and raise their families among us. Some live here year round, some migrate with the seasons. As a resident who enjoys birds and bird watching, I share with many residents the desire to protect wild birds since they cannot protect themselves from human impacts. Why I care? Hundreds of thousands of migratory birds collide with windows every year, including cedar waxwings, American robins, yellow-rumped warblers, crowned sparrows, and ruby crowned kinglets. These are all birds you can see in my neighborhood. During the early month of the COVID pandemic, I posted a different wild word, wild bird species each day to next door, and many, many people responded with stories of their own about the wild birds in their yards. Having these birds living near us and sharing, and sharing our sightings amongst ourselves benefited all of us. Why I care about light pollution? It gets worse every year. It affects the biology and health of humans as well as all living things. For birds, this also interferes with migration. They are distracted by artificial light from their natural flight patterns. Other birds that migrate to my neighborhood are the black-crowned grosbeak and the hooded oriole. I urge you to support Cupertino environment and birds by taking the actions recommended by the staff report. One, find that the action is exempt from SEQA. And two, to amend the municipal code as specified in the report. Thank you so much for this time to speak on behalf of those who cannot speak for themselves. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Connie. And to move the screen. And next we have Dashal Leeds. Dashal?
Welcome. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dashal Leeds. I'm the conservation assistant for the Sierra Club Limer Teeta chapter. Our chapter is in strong support of the ordinance tonight. I'd really like to second Connie's comments. There's something really magical about watching birds, even photos of birds, but especially in real life. There's something calming and peaceful about it. And I think having a healthy ecosystem around us is really a benefit to our mental health, not to mention the fact that nature should be protected for its own right. I'd really like to commend staff on a wonderful presentation and great ordinance. I think they did a great job at responding to the planning commission feedback from the last meeting. And I hope you can pass this ordinance swiftly. And I guess I'll just end my comments with, I, I think it's really a wonderful thing to be able to look up into the night side, into the night sky and see the clear stars. I think that's a really wonderful thing. And I hope that in the future, we, we can move towards a world where people do have a clear view of the night sky and access to a healthy natural world around them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dashal. And next we have Rose. Rose Grimes. Rose, are you there?
I am. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for the opportunity, Chair Moore. And I'm going to endorse what Dashal and Connie have said much more poetically than, than I could. So since it's late, I won't repeat them, but I, I really enjoyed their comments and I couldn't, I couldn't agree more. And I'll emphasize not only that I encourage the commission to pass the staff recommendations, but also that as, as Dashal alluded to, the whole process has been really educational. And I think that both the commission and staff have dealt with this in a, in a very professional and thoughtful way. I think the staff did a great job early on, and this is months and months ago, so I don't want us to lose, lose our memory of that with the community outreach and collecting the inputs from the community. And the community was very engaged. And then moving that along with their expertise into recommendations. And then the commission had a lot of very detailed comments and, and considerations of various scenarios that could affect residents and, and businesses. More than certainly I expected in the first presentation, but again, I think that staff did a great job in evaluating those and coming back with the kind of information that the commission was asking for, the commission needed to understand what the impact of this was going to be on the community. And I think what we've got now in hand is a very sensible tool for achieving the, the ends that were the objective all along. So it being late, I'll, I'll yield the remainder of my time and encourage the commission to endorse the staff recommendation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Rose. And next we have Shawnee, Shawnee Kleinhouse. Shawnee? Welcome, Shawnee.
Good evening, Chair Moore. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Shawnee Kleinhouse with Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. Our organization works to promote the enjoyment, understanding, and protection of birds and other wildlife by engaging people of all ages in birding, education, and conservation. We're located at McLaren Ranch and have been part of the Cupertino community for two decades. I have personally participated as stakeholder in Cupertino's park master planning process and many other projects. and many other, uh, projects and processes over the years. Uh, our Cupertino members, as you've heard, are, they love Cupertino for its environment and specifically for the birds, the trees, the creeks, the parks, and the beauty. And I thank Connie Cunningham and Rose Grimes, Grimes for their comments and Dash too. They spoke so well that they stole a lot of what I wanted to say. So I'll just talk about my experience with buildings that are designed to be safe for birds. Um, and aesthetically, I find that there are a lot of different designs and some of them are rather lovely. Uh, if anybody is interested one day to see a tour of bird safe design buildings, I can take them to Google and Intuit and Facebook and Microsoft and Mercedes-Benz, uh, project in Palo Alto, Mid Peninsula Open Space, their new building and others. And we see that these buildings are also, all of them are now having motion sensors and other controls to restrict lighting due to Title twenty-four energy saving requirements. So Eric and Ellen did a great job. They did really prepared strong and feasible recommendations to protect the night sky, to protect birds and to protect, and to help people enjoy them and be protected from light pollution. And we hope that you support staff recommendations and move them forward to city council. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Shawnee. And I'm seeing no further hands raised. Uh, Madam Clerk, did we receive any communications for this item?
Uh, we haven't received any during, uh, the presentational oral communications at this time. Earlier today and yesterday, I did forward some written communications, emails that came in, and those will be attached and added to the packet as part of the public record tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, um, we are on to our deliberations. If anyone wanted to make a motion, we could put, set that forth and then deliberate on it, or we can just simply start asking some more questions and however we want to do this.
I'd be happy to make a motion on this. I basically will, uh, read the material from the draft resolution, that we find the ordinance is exempt from environmental review under the CEQA guidelines, uh, section fifteen, three oh eight. I don't think I need to say all of this, uh, well, per the, per the draft resolution. Uh, second, that we adopt the proposed ordinance with the findings reflected in the proposed ordinance, which the planning commission makes as though, as, as though set forth in their entirety in this resolution, uh, in substantial form shown in the exhibit, uh, attached.
I second. And do we want to have some discussion on this?
I'd like to thank the staff. Uh, we, we, we had much more input for you than I thought we were going to have in the first hearing. Uh, and actually, I think you really did a fantastic job of responding, uh, to those items. Uh, I think there, one, uh, one item, uh, Commissioner Wong actually pointed out something that there was, this is, this in effect a change to the way that, you know, that you could have decorative lighting on your home. In my neighborhood, um, on Waterford, there's one house that's unlike all the others. It's, it's, you know, a house that was rebuilt to be in a very modern style. And one of the features it has is a number of kind of upshooting lights, uh, kind of uplit, uh, plantings. Uh, they really look fantastic. It's really cool. I suspect it's probably not going to be something that would be legal in the future, but on balance, you know, given the good that will come from this, um, ordinance, I think that it's probably, uh, an okay trade. Uh, anyway, so, uh, you know, that I support the, uh, the resolution as, as submitted. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I do have a clarifying question and it's regards to some of the lighting which we see out at Main Street on the, on the trees. There's lighting there and then there's a, uh, uh, kind of a wall of, of light. I don't know how to, how to, better to describe it, but it's on the, um, the Marriott Residence Inn, and I was wondering if that, if, uh, I was concerned about the permitted use. So, uh, is, would that be allowed under the new ordinance? I just want to clarify that. Both the, the trees being lit and say though they're on until midnight. And, and would, uh, new structure be able to have a solid wall that's lit if you're, if you're familiar with that feature?
Yeah, I, I think I know what you're talking about. The Marriott, uh, it's kind of at the corner, right? It's like, uh, like opaque glass, that kind of thing.
Exactly. Like maybe there's a lumen, a lumens, you know, some brightness level that, that would, uh, the new ordinance would, um, affect. And then it was, and then also those, the trees.
So there is, um, we do have, so for the Marriott, um, there's some lighting, like architectural features. Well, that's more uplighting. It, it could be done if it's more of an art type of thing or, 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 um, up, uplighting that's highlighting an architectural feature. I'm not sure. I don't think our ordinance would allow for that multicolored thing unless it went through some sort of, um, process. You know, if they were to say, oh, Marriott, this is, this is a art installation. It's going to do different colors or something like that and potentially that way. Um, in terms of the trees, our ordinance would not allow for that at the moment. It's exposed lighting. Um, it's not pointing to a particular use. Yeah, I don't think.
Silly question then. Um, we have a holiday, we have a holiday tree that we put up each year.
That'd be okay. That's, um, holiday seasonal lighting.
Okay, just, just to clarify that. Okay. But, but at Main Street, it, it seemed like it was holiday seasonal, but then it extended to all.
Yeah.
Holiday never ended.
Yeah, that, that's the tricky part, right? It's, it, holiday lighting is exempt and, um, I, oh, there it is. Okay, my PDF is acting weird. So we did have holiday lighting, um, during the period of October fifteenth to the January fifteenth. We, we give it a big sway because it's kind of holiday season in, in, in Cupertino. Um, so that lighting would be exempt, but if it keeps going, right, um, then it's not really holiday lighting at a certain point.
Hmm. So what? Is it gra, is it grandfathered in?
I would have to check on that. Okay, I, I'd have to see if the, what the permit history on this. I'm not sure if there's anything, if they got um, any permits or anything like that. I, I, I don't know at the moment. I, I have to check.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm sort of curious if there's like a dimmer version that would be acceptable, anything like that? Because I, I, I think it's, uh, attractive how they did it, um, but it is also really bright.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, I, I have to double check if it would be grandfathered in. Um, but as proposed, unless, unless it was up during the holidays, it wouldn't be allowed.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we do have a motion in a second and we are deliberating. Um, do any of the other commissioners have some comments or questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the staff for, uh, going and getting that data about the costs. And I think it's very reassuring to get those numbers, uh, because, uh, we now recognize uh, the value and the cost trade off. It almost becomes a no brainer. And I know, at least from my perspective, I think that's a useful principle to have that whenever we adding more regulation, we have some estimate of what it would take, translate to in terms of the burden. Um, I think very often, especially in California, we, uh, we add regulation. Uh, I'm not talking about the planning commission, but the internal state, and the consequences of that are probably not thought through. Uh, so I would encourage the city to always have that thing in mind and, uh, keep that as a part of your process of developing new, uh, bringing new items here. Thank you. All from me.
I can go next.
Okay. Commissioner Takahashi.
Yeah, um, I agree. You think, um, took all the feedback, definitely clearly answered all of the questions that we raised, um, got a flavor for the concerns that we brought up, um, you know, affordable housing, for example, um, in terms of where exemptions were, um, changed. And so, um, yeah, I think great job. And, um, looking forward to approving this. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And Vice Chair Wong?
Yeah, I'm, I think I liked the work that was done on the, um, on the glazing and the, uh, bird safe aspect of it. Um, I think I'm still opposed to the dark skies piece. And so if it was up to me, I would break the two up and I would be happy to pass and support folks on the, uh, on the bird safe portion. The dark skies piece, I think, is a little bit of, uh, overregulation to me. So, uh, but that's where I stand. So if there's a, if somebody's happy to split them up, I'm happy to support it. So.
Okay, um, so thank you, Vice Chair Wong. Uh, I, I have a, a question going back to the, um, the, the trees that are lit at, at Main Street. So, uh, if, if a person had, um, like string lighting in their, in their courtyard, uh, and they want to have that lighting on all year round, I'm, I'm gathering that they wouldn't be allowed to do that. Is that correct? They would only be allowed to have it during this designated, um, holiday season. Is that my understanding that right? So it wouldn't just be Main Street. It could be, uh, residential locations.
Right. Uh, the way, the way it's run right now, it's exposed light bulbs, um, is, is the, the big thing, exposed light bulbs.
Okay. And it doesn't matter if that light bulb is a little tiny, um, you know, a, a, a small.
We didn't draw that distinction, um, in, in the ordinance.
Okay.
I would be, I would be more inclined to support it if it didn't cover single family homes. That's where I draw the line. So, just to give you an idea.
Oh, well, okay. So, um, Vice Chair, are you, what do you think of the trees that are lit at Main Street all year round?
Um, see, to me, it's, I think that's a decorative proposal on their end, right? But they wouldn't qualify. Like, if you were to build a new community, they wouldn't be able to do that, given these laws.
Could it be considered art? Could you call it art and, and?
You could try to classify it as art, uh, and, and say that's, that's part of the decor and the aura that they're trying to provide in a design level. I mean,
You, you just cut out. Uh, okay, so Vice Chair Wong just, just cut out. Um, so is there a way that we can consider that, um, art, uh, the, the tree lighting? Is there, and, and could a, could a residence also say, you know, this, this is for artistic reasons? Is that at all possible or no?
No, it's, I mean, the, the intent of having that, that lighting for art is that it does have some review to it. So it's not just anybody can go like, oh, look, it's art, right? Um, the idea is that if you're proposing lighting for art or lighting that is art, that it is reviewed by, uh, some, by, by the Fine Arts Commission. It was, that their, their process and so that there would be some discretionary input from them.
Okay, is there a way that, that this could be defined, um, as, as string lighting and?
We can definitely look into that. Um, I haven't seen string lighting and, and, you know, it kind of, there's a balance, right? Um, like how much is too much? Um, but that's definitely something that we can look into and we can, give, give direction on that and bring that to, to counsel if, if it was for, we can tell them, you know, the concerns from the planning commission and, we can look into how other cities have done it. I, I, I can't recall again specifically seeing, um, street lights. Um, most cities do prohibit that.
Okay, so that, I mean, that gets into what, uh, Vice Chair Wong was saying about overregulation. And to me, it feels like overregulation because, you know, I know that there are, are people in my own neighborhood that have string lighting out year round. And could you repeat when the holiday season is con, is considered?
Yeah, it's from October fifteenth through January fifteenth.
Okay. So, oh.
Yeah.
There are some other holidays which people might want.
Exactly. You know, because, um, I know the Indian Diwali sometimes can be in Au-October and the season starts like two or three weeks before that. So, like, uh, we probably want to have plain barbecue for something like that.
Right. And when, then my concern is that when you're defining the holiday season, it's, it's, um, that it, it seems like it's considering certain holidays and we, I don't think we want to go there. Seems inappropriate.
Again, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a balance, um, I can't recall specifically what jurisdiction, uh, did incorporate holiday lighting. There was, um,
Okay.
Trying to pull up the comparison chart.
Um, I think, I think with, with holiday lighting, we want to have some sort of definition of what, what holiday lighting is. Um, and does that mean string lights, um, or not? So, yeah, I, I think personally I'd want some way to get the, the string lights out, perhaps out of this ordinance. Or, you know, or, or any suggestions from the other commissioners on how to deal with, deal with that? Or if, some opinions, if you're finding it to be too much regulation? Or are you in, in the same mind as, uh, the Vice Chair and you would like to just simply, um, go ahead with the bird safe design and not do the, um, dark sky?
If I may suggest one thing, uh, Chair Moore.
Yes, please.
Uh, maybe the commission can give us a little bit of direction in terms of, you know, what you would like to see. And we can do a little bit of research in terms of what other communities do with regard to string lights. And we can incorporate that into the city council action, um, so that at least we can, um, bring that to the council and, and take your concerns to them.
Okay, so, so personally, I like the string lighting. Uh, my concern is that in the, in Main Street, that the, they've got a lot of it. So it is, it is pretty bright and it's hard to tell if the brightness is from, from those trees or is it just a general brightness of the, the area being, being lit up? So I, I can't really, you know, make that personal determination, but I like them. I think they're attractive. And I know that people enjoy having them in their, in their courtyards so that they can sit out in the evenings when it's nice. So I wouldn't want to limit that. And I think, um, I'm not personally seeing, uh, at residences, a level of brightness which is, is, you know, overwhelming. So that would be the, the area I'd want to see looked into.
We, we can certainly bring some, we take some language forward to council once you make your recommendation.
We, we, we can also, maybe I suggest the language could be a definition for holiday lighting, something like, you know, festive low output lamps or, you know, limited to a small individual bulbs on a string or, you know, low output lamps used for, to internally eliminate, uh, yards or, or, or something like that, uh, as a suggestion for a definition. But I, I believe you, you do have a motion in a second. You could have multiple vote motions if, if you want to go in that route, uh, to split items as well.
Okay.
Missed the split. What was the split?
Um, or we could do, add a friendly amendment. But I, I would need some help with the language of that.
I'm not crazy about, about making amendment. Actually, I think that, uh, well, I, I, I hear the, uh, I hear the concerns. Uh, I think that, uh, well.
Well, right now, right, you'll have to turn off their lights in, uh, January. The, the tree lights.
Was this? This was ret- retroactive?
Yeah.
These requirements are all retroactive?
So will Main Street have to turn theirs off in January or will they, they able to ignore the?
It depends on, on their, on their, whether that was part of their approval, right?
Yeah, I think that's what we would want to look at. Um, he said lighting it that much would probably have some sort of review, just the output. But we'd have to, I, I, I can't speak to that specifically as to if or what permit they, they, uh, received.
Right. Could be an assessment of the wattage or the lumens that they're utilizing. Like, I guess that from my perspective on the string lighting, um, I, we could accor- incorporate a friendly amendment that assesses that, but we would want to, to, um, understand the impact on the dark skies in general. Seems to me that, that's the whole point of what we're trying to accomplish with this, right? So saying that we want to exempt string lighting, if there is some fact-based evidence that string lighting is a problem for dark skies, then, you know, then, then we're kind of contradicting, um, the intent of what we're trying to do. So, um, and, and I'm not sure if that's something staff can, can assess and understand. And if, if it is determined that string lighting under a And I'm not sure if that's something staff can can assess and understand, and if if it is determined that string lighting under a certain wattage or uh lumens is is not an issue for dark sky, then we just write something along the lines of uh patio lighting, string lighting, patio lining, lighting of, because most of the times it is softer than than your um flood lighting for a patio, um, so.
We we can definitely look into that um to see if there is like a threshold for for string lighting. That's something we can look into, for sure.
Yeah, I think, I think there's also a time element to that as well. You know, the the interesting question is if somebody chooses to light their backyard every night of the year, that that is different also than if they chose to do it. You know, they chose to do it, you know, ten days out of the year, so.
They would, they would never be able to install those lights to do that, given the way this is written.
Yeah.
Right, that's that's part of the problem. It's 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 highly restrictive. I'm 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 happy to, if it's okay, to split, split, take out the uh dark sky provisions and get this part passed on the bird safe. And then if we want to go back and reevaluate what you want to do with dark sky, um, I mean, I I'd be supportive of something that's not residential and and if you want to do it on commercial going forward, that's fine. I mean, we're not building a lot of new residential here, you know, so.
Y- yeah, I don't know if we want to just take residential out because that would essentially allow somebody to really light up their place, right? Which I think is part of what we're trying to accomplish. So it's, it's some limit, it's some element of what is enough lighting that an individual achieves their objective in terms of decorative elements without um lighting up the sky.
Yeah, well, no one's gonna put up a luxury, right, you know, so.
I don't know.
I mean, the FAA wouldn't allow it, right?
Is there a way that we can allow string lighting and have it be at the discretion of the um Community Development Director?
We're gonna get a mass automated application process.
Yeah, I mean, that, the question then is, what is, what is, what is the criteria for approving that? Right, because I like it, it's not a, you know.
It it would be easier to do for a larger development. Uh, because we would, we 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 could get, we typically get a photometric plan and then we can have them display all that lighting, all that. It would actually probably be easier for them. Um, the harder part would be with, like, the single family, the duplex and triplex. Um, because it's still the exposed bulbs. But it's something I think we can definitely look into, um, um, how we can allow it. You know, I can't think of a particular way at the moment, but I think staff can can look in um into other regulations and talk to other cities that have explicitly prohibited it and see what um, what they recommend. I think that's something we can definitely do.
So we we can recommend this for uh for approval and with with a recommendation that they look into um the string lighting and its impact. And find out, you know, if there's, if there's a way that they can have it be year round, if they agree, if there's, I don't know, some some regulation you can put on it. I don't even know how to word it.
But, but I say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, oh, sorry, go ahead. Uh, look, my ring security light would no longer qualify, right? My security floodlights would no longer qualify, like the ones that stop.
Activated, so.
But there, but if I leave motion activated on, you, so you have a couple types, right? They're all photovoltaic, right? So they're all set up that way. Um, but they're also, I mean, you can set them up as, I mean, those are your floodlights. Right, people use their ring, ring motion activated as floodlights on the way in, right? And and if those are disqualified on safety grounds, um, I'd be concerned. Right, because they're there for safety reasons. Sometimes people leave them on too for, I mean, it's stupid. If you leave your light on all the time, people realize you're not home. But some people think that tells, you know, that tells burglars you're home. You're not home. I mean, I don't know what they do, right? There's, there's like the psychology behind it. So so people use those lights or they leave a porch light on just to make sure people think they're home. Right, you're taking that away from them. This is what's going on here. I mean, and you can, you see them, you see some HOAs where like they require you to leave the light on, right? So that's the other flip side. Not that we have an HOA here, though, though sometimes we act like one. But but the point being is like, you know, that's, you know, that you're required to leave a light on everywhere, um, just for for neighborhood safety. So, and so if you go around, I mean, I don't think we have a lot of people who leave their lights on. Uh, but there's a good number that that do, like they just leave that night light on on their front porch.
Okay, just just to clarify that they, if someone's just changing the light bulb on their fixture which they have, they're, they are not triggering any any change. If they already have an existing security light, whether it, whether it has a sensor, a motion sensor or or the 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 uh photovoltaic sensor, um that, only if they were to take that off and put a new one on, would it have to comply with this, with this ordinance?
So there there's two things there. So you're right, light bulb change, totally fine. Security lighting, um, that's still allowed. So security lighting um is a provision that we do have and may be provided when necessary to protect persons and property. Um, when when it's applied, it's meant to be controlled by a programmable motion center, motion sensor. Um, except where continuous lighting is required by the building code, still no floodlights. Security lighting intended to illuminate a perimeter such as a fence line, um, area is permitted so that light still doesn't trespass. And then, um, yeah, so it's still motion activated. You still can have security lights that's not being taken away, uh, I don't know.
Okay, okay, and so a- again, my, if I'm not, still don't know how to word it, but I, if I could make a friendly amendment, it would be to have a uh city council review the portions which would affect string lighting. And potentially come up with uh s- some regulation around that, which pr- provides more flexibility. And is that, is that an adequate friendly amendment there that I could ask for a second on? Or does it need to be nailed down more?
Um, I'll just chime in here. I mean, uh, that, uh, you know, just to ask council to to consider that portion is a little vague. It doesn't actually indicate which way the commission's leaning, which I think is the intent of the.
Okay, so to to allow year-round low luminosity string lighting?
As an amendment to, as a change to the ordinance as proposed.
Correct.
That would be, I I think that would be a fine a- amendment if you get a second.
Do I have a second?
From Alan.
Pardon?
I think Alan seconded for.
Yeah, I seconded.
Okay, great. Thank you, Alan.
Can we pause and make sure Beth understands that for the um, for the resolution?
I was right, I was writing it down.
Oh, great, okay.
Yeah, and I wrote down the time too, so I can go back and just make sure.
I I say, I mean, I mean, from a process perspective, I'd rather split the vote and and split the two areas between bird safe and dark skies. Right, get the bird safe part done, get it in place, and then the dark skies piece, I'm just that that's one of those where it's, it's, the regulatory piece on that to me is, I don't know how to put it, it's for being very, very restrictive. Uh, almost too restrictive. And 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 I think that's, that's the part that concerns me, so. So I'm happy to split. And then if you want to add your string amendment, like to string lights and low lights things for exceptions, um, I I think it'd be easier for me to debate and deliberate that.
So don't we have to vote on the motion that's at hand?
Well, you have to vote the motion out off. You have to vote no on this motion.
Right.
To split or withdraw, if you were gonna go that way. If not, you could do it all at once here.
Right.
And, yeah, so.
So we can vote, we can vote on this and see how, 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 right? If we, if our, if a majority of us is in agreement to split, then we'll, we would vote it down and then discuss and re remotion, right, to ha- to to have them separate. If it passes, then um I think we're we're done.
The, oh, okay, so I I want to clarify from staff, um, looking at the draft resolution. The the ordinance to add chapter nineteen point one oh two glass and lighting standards. It it seems to me that dividing this up um is going to be complicated.
I I would agree. That's why I think we should vote.
Well, that's, that's partly why I'm I'm a little upset that they were combined. Because it was intentionally pushed through this way so that you'd only had one choice, so that you only make one recommendation to get to council. And and that to me was was not right. So I, that's, that's why I'm reacting the way I'm reacting. To me, they're two separate initiatives that are being rolled in, right? But for expediency's sake, this, you know, and and it's also like eleven forty-two at night, um, I can see, I can see exactly what's going on, right? So I, that's why, that's that's my only point. But you can vote for it and see what happens, and that's, Alan, Alan's correct on that, so.
I disagree with the suggestion that there was, there was some old kind of motivation towards putting these items together. I look at it more in terms of, uh, as it was described, uh, we're talking about, you know, not disturbing wildlife at at night, the, and we're looking at bird health and uh wanting to take care of the the glazing issues during the the daytime, and then you have the 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 light coming out of the buildings and all the this, this whole thing, I think it all goes together with, uh, you know, taking care of of birds. So I I I can understand why they put it together um like that. I I.
Right, the other thing I would add is is is, last time we went through this, I think we had, we brought up concerns about over restriction, um, and those were, I thought, addressed by um, the revisions that um staff made on on this amendment, so.
I I I'd actually say that, I think that there were some, let's see, my, okay, there were some exemptions added here that I think did actually address some of the bigger concerns.
Right.
Um, I I look at this, I, I completely understand, y- you know, uh, Ray, I, you brought up this, you brought up your concern in the first hearing, so, you know, if there's any, if there's any fault, you know, that that it didn't get split. I mean, that is, that is maybe one, um, you know, it's a valid concern. I just look at it, uh, you know, we 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 wouldn't bu- back up and try to have a discussion around, well, you know, we want to have a bird safe policy, but it doesn't need to be as safe as it was. Right, uh, that, I think that's a little bit of what we're, what we're doing here. If we, you know, if we're trying to really say we have a policy that promotes, you know, dark skies, then trying to put in a, an exemption so that you can run lights all year, if they just happen to be small enough, just seems like an odd thing to do to me. So I would prefer we just, we just do it the way we, I mean, you know, you could, you, you have the same argument, right? Somebody could come in and say, well, you know, maybe, maybe the, maybe the safe glazing should only be eighty percent instead of ninety percent, right? And I, you know, I I think that, I think that this has been, um.
I think, I think people underestimate the 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 use of lighting in in the pursuit of happiness, right? You know, it's it's an accent light to your, to your fence. It's a, you know, it's ability to, and and they're all controllable, right? But but we've banned it all, right? You can't even have the option in in a new place. Um, you know, it's it's the, it's the, the lighting that you put around your fence that you turn on when you're entertaining. Maybe you do like four or five times a year. Right, but you can't do that anymore after this rule, right? Um, it's it's the floodlights that you have, so when a friend comes and visits you, you turn them on, right? Well, can't do that anymore after this rule, right? I mean, it's not like you're gonna leave that thing on all day and all night. Your neighbors would kill you, right? I mean, it's like, stop, like, turn that thing off. I mean, like, we're all trying to go to sleep. But but it's it's those ins, those occasions, and you've just taken that away from someone's pursuit of happiness, is is what I'm saying. I mean, people won't leave these things on all night just to, you know, annoy the birds. That's, that's not the intention, right? And so meanwhile, you know, all new developments, think about it, all new residential developments, like, okay, count those on like, I don't know, the back of our hand. We can't even get those things built. Okay, fine, right? All new residential developments is 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 a very, very small amount, right? So if you've got a residential exception, I'd be okay with it, right? I mean, this, it's not gonna make a big deal. If if you want to get down to the single family home exemption, that's fine too, right? So, but but it's, you know, the 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 big polluters are still gonna be there. So like, we are, we are kidding ourselves in this, right? I mean, at Main Street, Valco's probably not, you know, it's probably exempt anyways, right? All the big commercial areas are exempt, Apple's exempt. I mean, Apple's is big glowing white thing that's on all the time, you know? So, uh, we are kidding ourselves, is what I'm trying to say, that's all.
Chair Moore, could I clarify a a couple of things if you allow me to?
Um, please.
That long, so, I I just, I just want to clarify that there was no, uh, there's no alternative motives for for staff to to merge two items together for all the reasons that you stated, uh, Chair. Uh, and we we heard you uh as a commission last time, uh, and all your concerns, and I would believe that we addressed those concerns this time. We did not hear a a consensus on the desire to split the items, although we we would have. But again, Chair Moore, for all the reasons you, you stated, which is why we merged them together, I just want to clarify, there's no, there's no alternative motives here. We're not trying to sneak one through or anything like that. It's just, again, for the reasons that you you spoke, I appreciate that, and I just want to clarify that. So, thank you.
Okay, excellent, um, thank you, and.
Clark, Mel, can I clarify just one other thing?
Please.
Sort of lighting would still be allowed as long as they meet the lighting and illumination standards and the downward lighting standards. Um, so there, there is no uh reason to say that that all that, the lighting along the fence would not be allowed or or things like that. They would still be allowed as long as it doesn't um go over into the neighbor's yard. So just, just trying to clarify.
Those lights are pretty wimpy lights. Um, they are twenty percent more expensive. I was just looking at Title twenty-four lights right now. I was just like going through the website, seeing what it is. So they're more expensive, they're wimpier. And 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 you look at them, you're like, oh, that doesn't accomplish, it doesn't accomplish what you're trying to accomplish from from the effect. So, that's all, I mean, but, but yeah, but, you know, the lighting, the light alternatives that are provided, right, are are restrictive, is what I'm saying.
Right, but that's the whole point of what we're discussing, isn't it, in terms of the dark sky element? Is to, is to somewhat limit the.
Yeah, but the coverage area is so little, the coverage area is so little. I mean, if 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 you were gonna go, and I'm not proposing this either, okay? But if if the argument was, let's go retro on every single thing from Main Street to Apple to everything else, and you really want dark skies. And there's a ten-year period.
But we're not, we're not going retro, is my.
No, no, but if you wanted to accomplish dark skies, that's what you would do. Well, so I'm saying, but but we're going after the little guy, like the residential person who, who's there, when when your bigger problem is over here. And I'm just arguing you're not accomplishing that either.
Could, could staff comment on what impacts will have on on uh commercial sites? Aside from the, aside from the trees with the decorative lighting. Thank you.
Yeah, they, the, they would be required to come, because it's with all the requirements, um, so shielded, downward lit, on certain uh foot lampers, um, the other thing would be, you know, turning it off at eleven PM, it's pretty much consistent. Um, they're i- i- it's it's meant to be, these rules are meant to be applied across the board. There's not um, anyone more or less um impacted by that.
Yeah, and and as you said earlier, generally speaking, those those regulations apply now, without, even without this ordinance. So, you know, yeah, I, Ray, I kind of understand, this is a, this is, you, I I think you're you're maybe saying this as a law that's solving a problem that we don't really, you know, we're we're back in that territory of solving a problem we don't really have. But I think that the objective is really, you know, there's a certain amount of light that we emit today. Uh, this object, the objective here is to reduce, reduce that amount going forward. And that's, and that I think is actually a good thing.
I think what I'm trying to say is the surface area, if you're to take a map of Cupertino and you, and you, you identify where all the big light polluters are, it's not gonna be the single family homes. And and that's one way of saying the same thing that you said, David. Um, and and I think what I'm also trying to say is like, if you're really trying to address this problem, you would address the commercial side. And you'd actually find a transition point for the commercial properties that are actually the big light polluters, right? And and say, we're gonna, we're gonna transition all this to down lighting, we're gonna transition those to low lumens, and here's your eleven PM curfew. Right, and you wouldn't punish the uh single family homeowners who are just gonna have some fun, like once, once or twice, you know, like, you know, a year where they have a big party and a picnic, right? Right, and and that's really what I'm just trying to get at, that we 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 trying to solve a problem, walk away and say, yeah, we, we got this great policy win, look at this. We did dark skies, um, when, when it's gonna have this much of an effect in the city, that's, that's what I'm trying to get to. So I would be supportive if you said, hey, look, let's go to commercial, give them a ten-year transition plan. And go out and say, look, we're gonna reduce your total lumens and lampers to this level, and you've got ten years to comply. And this is what, this is what we're trying to do to accomplish dark skies and and leave the single family homeowners alone.
Would staff like to tackle that?
Flip side of that is that ninety-five, you know, ninety or. The flip side of that is that 95, you know, 90 or 95% of the of the area in Cupertino is single-family homes. So that actually is.
But they're not the pollutants.
Well, I don't know, if you actually, if you actually weigh the amount of light being emitted, you may find that it's very difficult, even for a business with a spotlight pointing into the sky. It's very difficult then to overcome the effect of 95% of the rest of the space. It's just.
Do a Google Earth map. I I don't have one with me right now. And you'll see that it's not, the light emission isn't coming from the single-family homes. I mean, Mono Vista is pretty dark where you live. Even here in Rancho, it's pretty dark. The only areas are the lit areas for like all the shopping centers, right? And and all the highways that we have and the areas that are just required by law from safety and the commercial buildings. I'm being, I mean, someone should just do a map and you'll see it. That's all. So.
I was wondering if staff could talk about, are we making, having any impact on the streetlights that we have in the in the community? Any changes there?
No changes in there. We could talk to Public Works about those type of lightings. And there's just too, there's too many concerns in in terms of safety for drivers and pedestrians that they recommended not making any changes to the streetlights.
Okay, okay, because I I would have to say with regard to the street lighting, it would be great if we had more uniformity going through neighborhoods where we, and and you, this was something that you were teaching us really, is that having the light and dark areas is is not great. So hopefully, moving forward, we can get to a more uniform lighting and dimmer overall. Right? So but there was a mention about about Valco. So Valco would have to, you know, when they pull permits, they, and if this is, this ordinance is approved before they're pulling permits, they would have to comply with this ordinance.
Seth, you want, Seth, you want to comment on that?
Sure, yeah. So, you know, the city, we've, we've, we've looked into this. Our position right now is that the ordinance would would apply to the SB 35 project to, but to the extent that there's no conflict between the new requirements of the ordinance and the SB 35 project plans as they were approved back in 2018. So if there is no conflict and pursuant to SB 35, the ordinance can't, or rather does not change these aspects of the the approved plans. All that said, you know, this is a, obviously a new area of law. And just in the past several hours, actually today, some new legal arguments were advanced about how the the implementing this new ordinance might overlap or affect the approved projects. So we're taking a cautious approach of, you know, evaluating those arguments, and we need to look more closely at the approved ordinance and the project plans approved back in 2018 to, you know, make sure our 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 position is is still the same. And of course, position is subject to change if we if we find something different.
Oh, okay, because that's very interesting, because, you know, there were, the reach codes were, have been approved since since that time. And now we have potentially, you know, the bird safe design, you've got those those really tall towers. So it'd be, it'd be the same if they weren't, if the the ordinance didn't apply to the tall towers with regards to the bird safe design.
So the the reach code is a totally separate animal, because the building code application with regard to, you know, prior approved projects is just, is dealt with differently under state law, which we don't need to get into now, but that, so that's, that's not really an analogy here.
Okay. Okay, so you, so it's not entirely clear is what you're telling me?
Exactly.
If the bird safe design is gonna apply, but we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah.
All right, so did I have a second on the, on my friendly amendment regarding?
Did, Alan.
Alan, okay, so did anyone have some further comments, or shall we take this to a vote and see what happens? I'm not seeing any further comments. Madam Clerk, will you call the vote?
Okay. We go Vice Chair Wong?
No.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Aye.
Commissioner Feng?
Aye.
Commissioner Saxino?
Aye.
And Chair Moore?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes for 1:0 with Vice Chair Wang, but you know?
All right, and I want to thank staff for all of your work on this project and educating us on on this matter. It's been really important and informative. And of course, now I can't find my agenda. Here we go. Yay, I got it. All right, so now we have completed item four, and we're moving on. We have no old business or new business. Do we have any staff and commission reports?
No staff reports.
Great. I I don't, this is not exactly a commission report, but I did attend the, on Zoom, the CUSD Board Meeting last week, and they're looking at potentially closing several schools, which is, it was alarming. Are there any other commissioner reports?
Yeah, I've also spoken in the previous CUSD meeting, attended the one this one also. And there's also a CSD United effort to tell the board from all the schools to defer the decision of school closure as much as possible. And I'm hoping that the city council can help pitch in till we know what happens to Prop 15 and other things which can help elevate some of the funding challenges. So I hope the rest of the city institutions come together to prevent school closure this time.
Okay, are there any other commissioner reports? Okay, hearing none. I call this meeting adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night.